...of the Commissioners, Craven County Commissioners' regular session. Today is Monday, August 18th. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Booker?
Here. If you would, folks, stand. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but first, we're going to hear a prayer by our county attorney, Mr. Gray.
Lord God, from whom all authority flows, grant these county commissioners wisdom and prudence as they deliberate the service of the common good on behalf of our people. Give them a special care for the neediest among us. Give them an enduring respect for families as the foundation of our great society. And finally, Lord, give them holy reverence for those who have gone before us, that we may build on their good work for the sake of a peaceful, prosperous future. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, if you have the agenda in front of you, are there any changes, additions, deletions that you want to make?
A move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item number one on our agenda today is Trillium Health Resources Annual Report. We have Victoria Jackson with us. Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you all for having me this morning. A beautiful morning at that. As mentioned, I'm Victoria Jackson. I serve as the Regional Vice President for the South Central Region for Trillium Health Resources. I will give you the express version of our annual update. There is no way that I can summarize all that we do within a matter of minutes, but please know that my card is in the packet that I've provided, my direct cellphone number. So if you have any questions, and Commissioner Hunt can attest to this, please do not hesitate to reach out, and I'll respond accordingly. So just going to give you a brief overview of who we are, a couple data points, and then also our community engagement efforts here in Craven County. As you may know, we are one of four local management entities in the state of North Carolina. There's Alliance, Partners Health, Vaya Health, and then we serve mostly the eastern part of the state, as long as some of the mid-state area. As indicated on our slide here, our mission is we're committed to transforming lives and strengthening community well-being. And the way that we do that is through strong partnerships with our community stakeholders. We have to have those partnerships so we know what the local needs are of each community. So we pride ourselves in taking care of people and then also having those connections. Next slide. We are considered the largest geographically of the LME MCOs. We cover 46 counties within North Carolina. With a total population of about 3.1 million, and of that 3.1 million, we have what we call three health plans that we cover. That's the tailored plan. That's one of our newer implemented health plans, which covers not only behavioral health coverage, but we manage physical health, pharmacy, long-term support services, as well as non-emergency medical transportation. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. We have about 163,000, that's in Medicaid Direct, a little over 51,000 for tailored plan. Medicaid Direct is that older model that just covers behavioral health care. We manage behavioral health care. It's kind of like that fee-for-service model. And then we have about 287,000 individuals that are uninsured, and they fall up under our state health plan. We talked about local connections. On this particular slide, just give you a high-level overview of how we ensure that local connections are there. It is important to us. Because of our vast geography, we have established five regions. And with those five regions, there's a dedicated Regional Vice President. There's also community liaison staff. For Craven County, Tiffany Heron is your community liaison person. We also have CFAC, which is our Consumer Family and Advisory Committee. They are strong advocates for individuals that we serve. They also have lived experience themselves. So we're very grateful for our CFAC. All of these bodies, the Regional Advisory Board, the CFAC, they feed up to our governing board. So we have representation from our CFAC committee, as well as our Regional Advisory Board on our governing board, to help with that bi-directional communication. Specific to Craven County? Next slide, please. What I can tell you is, over the past year and prior to, you all have strong representation here in Craven County. Commissioner Sherri Hunt, Carly Wooler, and Ms. Catretta Flowers, they both served, all three of them served on our CFAC or Regional Advisory Board, and they have been wonderful in giving us guidance, as well as having some tough conversations, because you have to have tough conversations in order to serve the community. So I'm very grateful for them. You also have an Associate Regional Vice President, which is Mr. Terrell Austin, and then we talked about Tiffany. So your county is well-covered as it relates to having representation on Trillium's boards and committees. Next slide. So from July to December 2024, just want to talk about the number of individuals that we've served. We've served over 80,000 unique individuals with severe behavioral health needs. And I need to also notate that that is the population that we cover, is individuals that have severe behavioral health needs. And this is just for this timeframe. You'll see the breakdown of mental health, substance use, and intellectual developmental disabilities. Mental health was at 63%. Substance use is at 17%. And then 20% of our coverage is those individuals that have ADD needs. We spent over $802 million in services just for that particular timeframe. And specific to Craven County, on the next slide, we've served 2,643 members, and then you can see the breakdown of mental health, substance use, and ADD. I think what's important to note here, too, is that this is an unduplicated count, which means that an individual can both receive services, they may have received services in mental health and substance use at the same time, and vice versa. Next slide. Want to talk about the tailored plan update and just this brief snapshot of Medicaid transformation. We went live with the tailored plan July 1 of 2024. We just celebrated our one-year anniversary. It was not an easy lift, and it was at the heels of a major consolidation. We had to consolidate within 45 days, three major entities, and then we had to launch the tailored plan. There were some lessons learned during that launch, and any launch of this nature comes with lesson learned. And so what we identified is that our call volume in our call center increased tremendously. So to us, that meant that we needed to have more communication out to our communities. Then also, there was a need to increase collaboration with our non-emergency medical transportation broker and the transportation providers. We had a little rough start with them, but we're back on track. And then also, there was a need for extension of provider flexibilities to reduce disruption from following launch. We need to also make sure that we're working closely with our providers, and then also with the state around flexibility. So those were three areas for lesson learned, and we will carry those on to the next lift that we need to take in terms of launching another plan. I also want to highlight, because I think this is very important, too, is that we are not your only health plan in Craven County that's serving individuals that have Medicaid. Back in July of 2021, private companies came in, Blue Cross Blue Shield, AmeriHealth, WellCare North Carolina, and Carolina Complete. It was five private companies. And now they serve the majority of individuals on Medicaid, those individuals that have mild to moderate needs. And we continue to serve those that have severe behavioral health needs. So next slide, please. Here is just a refresher. Again, not enough time to dive into the details of it, but we talked about the standard plan launch. That was in July of 2021. There's also the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians Tribal Option. That was launched in 2021 as well. And that plan serves the tribal members and their families. We talked about Medicaid Direct. And then we also talked about tailored plan, which was Phase Two in July of 2024. So now, we are in Phase Three. Phase Three, I want to park here just for a second to explain what's getting ready to occur in December of this year. And it's the foster care plan. It's the statewide foster care plan. It's called the Children and Family Specialty Plan. And last year, the Department of Health and Human Services, they awarded that plan to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross Blue Shield titled it Healthy Blue Care Together. So you have some packets over there, and in that packet is a handout. It's a fact sheet related to the Children and Family Specialty Plan. What that means is that the children and their families that are involved with foster care will transition over, they have the option to transition over, to Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan, which is the statewide. For us, it's about 11% of the individuals that we're serving right now that's slated to move over to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are working diligently. One of the main goals is to make sure that our children and families do not have uninterrupted care services, are not interrupted. And so we have an internal transition team that's working closely with the state and also internally to make sure that that transition is as smooth as possible. Next, just to kind of talk about a little bit of the data, as I mentioned before, we have other health plans that are in your area. Overall, for the 46 counties, we cover about 28% of members that are on Medicaid, and 72% fall for the private companies, those standard plans. And specific to Craven County, it's about a 30%, 70% split, where we're covering 30% and the standard plans are covering 70%. And that's on your next slide. Want to give you a brief update around some projects that are in your area. On the slide is just an insert. There's no way that we can highlight all of the projects that we're doing in Craven County, but we did want to bring these to your attention. You know, we have substance use prevention in the schools, where we're working with organizations to provide fentanyl abuse awareness programs, and then also some other programs as well. We have started distributing the niloxone kits. Craven County received theirs. We do want to thank you. We appreciate you for supporting us in being able to provide those niloxone kits, as well as test strips. Summits and re-entry simulations, we do those throughout the counties that we serve. We most recently had a re-entry simulation here in Craven County. CHESS Health is the Center for Health Enhancement System Studies. That is an app. We partner with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's a free app for individuals who are in recovery. One of the neat things about this app is that it has 24/7 peer support availability. So if you have someone who is in recovery and they need assistance or support, say at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, then they can reach out to a peer support specialist through this app. We also have small business funding available for individuals that are ADD, and they may have a small business, or they want to develop a small business. And so we have some funding that we would help support individuals who qualify for that particular funding. We also have the Empower Summer Camp, and that's for individuals that have ADD. It's open to school-aged children, and it just offers some support after school for folks. And then lastly, TULA, which is the Trillium Ultimate Living Assistant. We are very proud of this program. We actually won a couple of awards around it. It's a technology-based program that empowers individuals to improve independence through the use of enabling devices. So it's essentially technology that will help identify if they need to remind them to take their medication. It could be that their door is open in the house, and so it will let them know that the door is open. So another piece, or another resource, to help with improving quality of life, essentially. And then lastly, I think this is the most important slide within the slide deck, and that is how individuals can access services. We want to make sure that the services are available and people have a way to access. There's no wrong door. We contract with over 1,600 providers within the state and some bordering states as well. An individual can go to a provider office and receive services without having to contact us initially, or they can contact us and we'll make the connection to the provider for them. We have a 24/7, 365 behavioral health crisis line. Christmas, Thanksgiving, we're on to help make that connection. And then we also have a member recipient service line that operates 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that's more for your general questions that recipients may have. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Jackson?
I have one. Will Trillium or anyone be at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting this Thursday and Friday?
Yes, we have a team that will be there. All of the Regional Vice Presidents are slated to be there, as well as our CEO and some of the exec team members. Actually, our CEO is going to be on a panel and is going to provide updates around the tailored plan.
Is that Thursday or Friday?
That's on Friday, and I think it's about 2:15, that session, 2:15.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? Well, we thank you for coming and for the update, and we know where to find you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. There are a number of items on it. I'll go through them quickly. The minutes of August 4 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the health additional state funding, budget amendment, health carryover funds, budget amendment, water, additional funding for vehicles, and ground penetrating radar. Sheriff has two. One is a rollover budget amendment. The second one is also a rollover budget amendment. Under Administration, Record Retention Schedules Update. Under CARTS, Request for Public Hearing. And under Economic Development, a request for public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll, Clerk?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item number three, Soil and Water Conservation. Mr. Brody Brown is going to speak to us. Good morning, Brody.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. So the Soil and Water Department would like to request a rollover budget amendment in the amount of $140,755 of unspent funds for the Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. The original funding of $140,755 was approved by the Board of Commissioners on October 21, 2024, to remove vegetated debris from the Arnold Drainage Canal in Happy Land Creek. To date, we have not spent any of the Strap Round Two funds. Strap Round Two funds will expire on December 31, 2026.
Okay. We're being asked to approve the requested budget amendment in the amount of 1,40,755 for the Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. The second item is Assistance Program, Contract Award Round Two. Brody?
So on May 30, 2025, staff published a request for proposals for debris removal contractors for Strap Round Two. The proposals were due by June 23, 2025, in which we received two proposals. After review and rating by our review team, we request that the Board of Commissioners award the strap contract to J&amp;J Environmental LLC. The allocated construction budget for this project is $119,641.75. J&amp;J Environmental's bid came in at $57,014.35, which will allow us the ability to move upstream to perform additional $62,623.40 worth of work. At this time, we request the Board of Commissioners to award this contract to J&amp;J Environmental LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of $119,641.75.
Okay, you've heard the proposal. Do I have any questions? I'll bottom motion.
I make motion.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item number four. Thanks, Brody. Appreciate it. Social Services, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners, County Manager. Today, we bring before you two budget amendments, asking to roll forward funds that were in our budget from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. The first one, budget amendment pertains to home care community block grant, which is ARPA funds that we have planned to expend upon meals. A little bit of those funds will go towards renovation costs that's happened at the seniors' center. Also, some of those funds will go towards some of our health promotion programs, games that seniors can play that stimulates cognitive exercises and things such as that. And also, we will be giving out some caregiver educational materials. So we ask that you would approve the roll forward of $25,955 into this year's budget so we can go ahead and purchase those items.
Move to approve.
These are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, I move to approve.
Okay.
Second, a motion.
Got a motion and a second. These are funds that were approved but weren't used yet. Roll them over so we can use them this year.
That's right. And there's no county funds in this. This is all federal money.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Okay, second item.
And we are asking to roll forward adoption promotion funds in the amount of $94,329. These funds are awarded to counties when they exceed the baseline number of adoptions, or that we adopt a special set of sibling groups, a large sibling group, for either children that have significant needs, either behavioral, physically, or physical needs. And these funds are federal funds, and these funds, what we mainly expend these on is recruitment of other foster parents. We also, at times, have had to help people come in and teach our math classes if we have vacancies. So these are, those funds from last year, they're asking to roll forward from this year, be able to use those on those activities.
Okay, similar situations. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question before you leave.
Yes, sir.
The foster care. How does your information tie with Trillium? She mentioned foster program in her.
Right. We are very familiar with, talking about the Child Family Specialty Plan that's happening in December of this year. We're very familiar with that plan. Our association has been in numerous discussions going back years regarding that Child Family Specialty Plan. Commissioner Smith, as you saw on the Trillium map, you see that there's four different LME MCOs. And before Trillium actually expanded to, with East Point, and I can't remember the other one, I think Sand Hills, before they expanded to those counties, it was almost as if our foster children, if they could be placed in Trillium catchment area, and they had to be placed in another LME MCO, sometimes those services didn't seamlessly go over there. So with this entire state plan that, with foster children, you know, we want to keep children in Craven County or close, but say there's a special need that a child has to go to Cleveland County for. Well, at this time, you know, those services should seamlessly go through that, go through that plan with Child Family Specialty Plan. Sometimes it did with Trillium. Sometimes it didn't, because, you know, they have to have contracts with all the providers throughout the state.
If a child is up for foster care, needs foster care, how would it, how would you determine whether it goes through your program or through Trillium?
Oh, well, the Child Family Specialty Plan is not our program. You know, that was a, that was a plan that was awarded by the Division of Health Benefits to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Right.
From my understanding, there's even LME MCOs bid on it. So the DHB awarded that program. What would happen is that our Medicaid, their Medicaid eligibility is determined through our office. And so what would happen is that those plans would be chosen, and we would choose to place those children, most likely, on that Child Family Specialty Plan. So we're looking at that right now. You know, I'm actually on the committee for our director's association that meets just about every Friday to get updates on that Child Family Specialty Plan. So it's something that we have, you know, as a director's association, have been trying, this is one of the things that we've been trying to advocate for and make happen because of those challenges that we see with foster children and the time that it takes with, you know, with children who do have to move and have to move out of the catchment area to make sure that those services happen uninterrupted.
Good. Because when there is, when there's a, everything is not linking together, it makes it difficult for the child, you know, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm delighted that you are working toward that end.
Yeah, so we're hoping to see some real benefits for that. And hopefully, what will happen is that we'll see some more children that will have their, any mental health behaviors will come stabilized enough, some of those high-acuity children, to where, you know, we can hopefully find permanency for them. It's hard to do that when, you know, they're having to move so much, and if you're moving through different catchment areas, and you're having to start over with services. But now, it'll be all underneath one umbrella. So hopefully, that you'll have one care manager who will be over that person, and who can talk with other people in the state, and they're all underneath one entity, instead of, you've got Trillium, and Vaya, and Partners, and others, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item number five, Sheriff Hughes. Several items for us today.
Yes, sir. More Chairman, Commissioners, you have three items. Two of them are going to be rollovers, and one's going to be a payout on an employee. First is a donation fund rollover. These are donations that we received in FY '25, and that we're just requesting that those funds be moved over into the current budget year in the amount of $15,025.
Okay. Board, to do that, we have to approve it, so do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the budget amendment to roll over $15,025. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Second item.
Yes, sir. The next one is another rollover. This is going to be for equipment that we've ordered, ammunition, vehicle repairs, parts for vehicles, portable radios, and radio upgrades. The POs have been issued for all those. This is in the amount of $31,853, and we would like to roll that over as well, so we can.
So ammunition still isn't coming the day after you order it?
It is not. No, sir. It is not. And in many cases, vehicle parts as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
And the third one.
Commissioners, the last one is the employee payout. This is an employee that had been with us for quite some time, has moved on. This is a payout of vacation and holiday, and there's very little comp time, because now we have a very good program in place where we no longer acquire a bunch of comp time. So the bulk of this is going to be vacation payout and holiday, and this is in the amount of $54,366. And this was a detention officer.
And this is an employee that is retiring or did retire?
Has left us, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve $54,366 to cover the cost of holiday and vacation pay for this employee. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
Just with the hurricane season about, just want to let you all know and the public know that we are prepared to deal with anything that might come this way. We've already prepared for, you know, potential flooding, possibly in the eastern part of our, our county. So we will have high-rise vehicles that are ready to deploy anywhere in the part of the county to take care of our residents. Also, with school coming back into session, we're also prepared. All of our schools are covered. And we expect it to be a very smooth transition from summer back into full-time school.
Very good. Okay, we thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the sheriff? Everything's quiet.
Still locking up drug dealers. Yeah, thank y'all.
There are good things about that, really. People pleased with the work that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. I've got great people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item that deals with the Water Department. Dwayne Halligood and Elliot Thomas and County Manager White are going to update us on this.
Good morning. The Water Department's requesting the board's approval for a temporary customer service clerk. One, we have a current full-time employee who is going on leave. The approval of this temporary position is vital to ensure the smooth functioning of the Water Department and continue to provide the high quality of the service to the community that they're used to.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions?
I have a question. How long will it take to fill that position, do you, do you project?
So, you mean? Take that one? So we're gonna, we'll go through it like a staffing agency to get someone in. It shouldn't take very long. We anticipate, I think, about twelve to sixteen weeks, individual would be out. So it'd fill that gap. And one of the reasons this is even on the agenda is we're so early in the fiscal year. We don't have any lapse hour or anything. So just to make sure we're covered, we want to go ahead and get this done so we know we can cover that through the term.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Or did I get one already?
You got one.
Okay, I got one. Can't remember. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we move to item B, there is a potential conflict that I may have with this issue. I'd like to ask the board if they would to recuse me of voting in any discussion on this matter. And once that's taken, I'll leave the room.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you are excused, Vice Chairman. This next item deals with funding for the meter changeout program.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this morning, we are asking for approval for continued funding for the meter changeout project. In twenty twenty-two, the board approved funds to begin changing out fifteen thousand meters of varying ages across the county. The next set of meter changeouts will happen in the Harlow Township Six area this fiscal year. That's just over thirty-five hundred installations. Since the beginning of this project, new software has been implemented, and the accuracy of the reads is better than ever. In addition to the increased accuracy of readings, AMI technology offers leak, leak detection alarms for the Water Department, which can reduce water loss for the county and help customers incur less cost due to plumbing issues. This funding request will allow the county to purchase all remaining meters, leaving only installation and antenna cost for the next year. So the action request is that the board approve a budget amendment of three point six million dollars for the next phase of installs in the remaining meters.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Halligood?
Three million, six hundred thousand will buy all the meters we need to finish this project. So with that being in mind, do I have a motion?
With purchase and installation, right.
But the installation will come in stages.
Correct. So in the first year, the three point six million includes installation of the meters to finish out the Harlow area and the Township Six area. And then there will be a second contract next year to complete the installation of all the meters. But this will purchase all the materials and equipment needed except for some collectors and antennas.
Same. Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. That was simple.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item seven is appointments. We have six pending appointments. The Aging Planning Board, the Clean Sweep Committee, the Seventy Corridor Committee, the Planning Board, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Business Community Under Twenty-One, and Volunteer Agricultural District, District One and Six. Those are coming up. For current, the first item is the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee. Following three members seek reappointment. Judy Lloyd, Barbara Smith, and Debbie Titus. Do I have a motion to approve those, or are there any other nominations? Hearing none, so we have a motion to approve those three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There, they will be approved by acclamation. Second, Riverbend Board of Adjustment, Kelly Forrest seeks reappointment.
I recommend that we approve Ms. Forrest.
Okay. Are there any others for Riverbend Board of Adjustment? Hearing none, Kelly Forrest will be reappointed by acclamation. And then upcoming, we have the Child, Community Child Protection Team, Sean Clavo. That'll be coming up at a future meeting. So those appointments will conclude today's appointments. Next item is the County Attorney's Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have one item for your consideration this morning. It involves county-owned surplus real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. Unlike most of the other surplus properties that I bring before you, we do not own this one jointly with any town or municipality. It is a hundred percent county-owned. The property is located off of Biddle Road with a parcel ID number of three, zero, two, one, oh, two, two. We've got an initial offer in the amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. And the tax value of the property is ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. The board would like to move forward with it. I would suggest a, a motion and vote authorizing the upset bid process so we can get the thing published and move it toward finalization.
Okay.
Hello?
Got a motion and a second. We need a roll call? Is this all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Got it. That's right, there's money involved. County Managers' Report. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Pleasure to be with you this morning. Just a couple of things to update you on. Monday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM will be the grand reopening of the Craven County Senior Center. We're really proud of the facility and the work that not only they do every day, but how the facility looks, and it'll serve our senior citizens moving forward. We will have a plaque ceremony, presentations, and performances that day. So please come at ten at least for the, the grand reopening, but plan to stay if you can for some of the events throughout the day. If you do plan attending, if you would just let Shane know so he can let the senior center know a number that we're bringing there.
And that's, repeat that date again.
It will be Monday, September twenty-ninth, at ten AM at George Street, eight-eleven George Street.
Next Monday.
Of course, all the citizens who can hear this.
No, two weeks.
September. In September.
I'm sorry.
Right.
All month.
Let me get, let me get, let me get my mind straight. It's been, I had a long day yesterday. September.
September, September twenty-ninth at ten AM.
So a month from now.
And it is, of course, open to all the citizens who may hear this, so. Last thing I was going to say, and I think Sheriff Hughes highlighted that, we are in the meteorological peak of hurricane season here for the next few weeks and month, maybe a month. I just would remind citizens that we put out a lot of information on social media. There's good tips and tricks and all that stuff to be prepared. You can never be too prepared for a hurricane in eastern or Carolina. We've seen that, we know that. We've got a great group of citizens that have been through this with us before. Obviously, we hope and pray that we have a, a very quiet season, but we need to be prepared anyway. So with that, that's all I have, unless you have things for me.
Jack, my only comment there would be, it's been quiet for a number of years. And as a result, I think it's really important that we recognize that we're going to get another hurricane.
That's right.
Maybe not this year, but maybe this year. So we need to get on, stay on our toes and make sure that we've got ourselves prepared, each individual supplies and whatever else so that we don't get caught off guard.
You got it. Fun fact for everyone, Craven County has had more federally declared disasters than any other county in North Carolina.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah? So when we, we talk about these things, it's very important.
You didn't tell me that before.
I didn't tell you that before. But you got to think, I mean, there's, there's a lot of them where almost any hurricane, whether it goes inland and causes the riverine flooding, or it comes from the coast and causes storm surge, we're going to get it either way. So I think that's probably why. Certainly not, not a merit that I'd like to have on the record, but we're there, we know how to deal with it, and we'll, we'll keep plugging along, so. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you. Commissioners' Reports. Mrs. Smith, would you like to go first?
I, I always have an observation that following what Mr. White said, I was on the street behind Trent Park School after that big rain, not even. And, and you could hardly drive on part of that street. So we don't have to have our hurricane to be in dangerous conditions in New Bern because with the big rain, some of these streets are not passable, so.
Yeah, I just heard the other day, someplace where they had like six inches of rain and some of the streets were totally flooded. And the reminder is, don't drive into that situation. Turn around and go, go the other way. Don't try and drive to standing water. Commissioner Hunt?
No report.
No report? Commissioner Mitchell?
No report. No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just have one item, and that is a week ago, yesterday, the folks in Home Place Community, which is kind of at the edge of our county, going toward Jones County on Bryce's Creek Road. We had a little Sunday afternoon meeting with their homeowners association. You were there?
Yes, sir.
Jason was there, along with a representative from our forest folks. And the subject was preparing their community in the event that there is a fire in the Croatan. They're right across the street. And I do recall, how many years ago, Jack? Two or three years ago when we had that big fire?
I think it was, I think it was about two and a half years ago.
Yeah. Several years ago, we had a pretty major wildfire in the Croatan. And you could see flames from that community. And so they're, they're a little nervous.